Okay, at this time, I apologize, we're, I think the clock up there is a little fast because my watch is not, says four o'clock now. So we're going by my watch. So it's four o'clock, we are ready to move into our work session. It's Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. All board members are here except for Ms. Bellamy, which I'm assuming she will show up. And we have Ms. Mitchell on the phone. And our school board rep is here, yes, thank you. So basically what we're going to be discussing today is our strategic planning. We met, wow, when did we meet? Way back in January with AJ from Council of Great City Schools. We came up with some goals and some guardrails, and that's what we're going to be presenting, I believe, today. The process after this will be that we do have a meeting on the 18th with our Strategic Planning Committee, and we will roll this out to them, get feedback from them, and then we'll roll this out to the public again to get feedback. And then in June, we will set these goals and guardrails. However, I want to stress that once we set these goals and guardrails, it is not our job as a board to set the objectives or how we're going to meet these goals and guardrails. That is a district function. So just want to throw it out there. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Bishop, not sure what you guys have planned.
Thank you. Madam President, and at the last school board meeting, we presented just a draft. We've updated the draft that you had since last time. So for those of you that like electronic only, we did send in an email, this information, but we also have it present. And what we figured is we take 15 to 20 minutes to reorient back to what this is supposed to look like, what AJ had, the document that these were, the guide for this document, and then turn it over to staff, two of the folks, Mark and Kathy, who were present with us at the retreat, who have been working over time, really assisting with figuring out the metrics and the questions and the interim goals for this. So we've taken the goals that the board has decided. We do have the information on the guardrails, but the same thing needs to happen, that there'll be guardrails and interim guardrails too, so then that's a process as well. So if we, we were thinking taking the first five minutes, so that, and then we'll read it too. If you look at this document, we did receive these from AJ, and we have them electronically as well. We brought a copy, we can turn the copies back in because we will reuse these if you don't want to hold it. If you could look at page two, and really on page two, from the red is something that we don't want to do. That is the non-example, or the anti-example that you want. And then we're using this orange to green to blue as our, in setting our goals, the board with the superintendent for the vision and goals, the vision, displaying the vision and value of the community that are student outcomes. And the values of the community will come out in the guardrails. So with that, if we could take five minutes, read the orange, green, and blue, and mark whatever pokes out at you. Because when you see the goals, we'll use this as discussion.
And Deana, just interrupt if you have questions or comments.
So what we're reading right now is the second document that Katie sent me.
Correct.
Right, page two, just page two.
And it's the second, third, and fourth column.
It's for student outcomes, so it's covered.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and Ms. Bellamy has joined us. Thank you. Are you timing us?
Yeah, I figured a couple, a couple more minutes if everybody needs it.
Yeah. So are there any questions, comments about what you just read?
Our brains are back around what we learned.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So we don't need to spend any more time. The next thing we're going to provide is an update to the goals that were posted the other day. And as we pass this around, is there anything that popped out at you in what we've read? As like, hey, this is something our board needs to think about, or hey, I'm not sure sure we know how to do this, or we for sure better do this, or I'm going to, I'm going to work to do this. Anything that popped out in reading the exemplar for goal setting? I mean, just discuss it if it does. If there's no questions, what, what do you like?
Test. So I think one of the important pieces for me that actually lingers with me since our retreat has to do with student outcomes, and making sure that that's reflected in all the work that we do.
Yeah. And very similar to us, we have to continue to ask ourselves when we present, is it an input, is it an output? So to us as well, we have to break it down.
Right.
Is this the value we're talking about, or is this the actual student outcome? So in the new rough draft that we have, what we decided to do was to place definitions there just as a guide in regard to specifically what's a goal, an interim goal, SMART again, how to write SMART, you know, specific, measurable, attainable, focused, time-bound goals. Student outcomes, outputs, and inputs, because those are going to be most likely the language that we use amongst each other when we challenge each other about, is this an output, is this an income, or output, input? I want to share that we're going to go over each of the goals, and at the very end of the day, the other day, there were two that were lingering. And one was in career tech, and one was in success in life. How do we know that our stu-, we want them to be prepared? What we've done in doing the research, especially through Secondary and our CTE Coordinator, her goal was that it is college, career, and life-ready, so we've done some research around there and presented the new goal, and we'll really talk specifically about that one. But we ended with these goals the other day, and then staff have worked for the interim goals. The district mission in preparing all students for success in life, I think we liked, and we were continuing with that, you know, that overall, the reason why we exist and what we're going to do. But I'm going to turn it over to Mark and Kathy. So the first goal was one that is SMART, it did have all those indicators that were asked of in a SMART goal, specific and measurable, what exactly, exam, when does it start, when does it stop, and what is the growth that you're looking for, or the attainment? So turn it over to Mark, and he's going to talk through the academic goals, and then we'll then go to the career tech, life goal, outcome.
So thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the first goal in bold black there in the middle of the page talks about the percentage of third grade students who are proficient in reading on the state assessment. So you'll notice that we put in there two targets that currently roughly around 40% and to try in five years to get to 80%. And I would describe that as an aspirational goal. It's, it's a heavy lift, it's something that we should aspire to. But underneath it are what I'm going to call the perspirational goals. These are the ones that actually you have to work pretty hard at to make happen. And there's two types of these, and I'll talk about them. And so when I usually give examples of how assessment lenses work, it's like going to the eye doctor. You know, you go, and there's these numbers they put on the wall, and there's a big chart there, and you're trying to find different ways to look at them to make sense of it. And there's two lenses I'm going to talk about, there's this status lens and a growth lens. And the status lens is how are we doing compared to other people around the country? Or how are we doing compared to the rest of the state of Alaska? Or how are we doing compared to this school, to that school? That's, that's a status. And it's probably the most common way we think about test scores, is how are we doing compared to somebody else? The other lens that we use is a growth lens, and that is, well, how much did we change from year to year, or fall to spring? And how do we gauge that? So there's two kinds of goals here down below. The first one you'll see where it says possible interim goals. The first one for K1 is that we look at the reading benchmark that the FastBridge assessment provides, and we use the early reading composite, and it, our goal for interim, year to year, in AJ's way of looking at this, interim goal is something that's from year to year, or it could be year to three years, but is from May of 2020 to May of 2021. And the reason there's blanks, there's no numbers in there, is that that interim goal, we haven't had the FastBridge May assessment. So when we get that first year in under that, then that'll become the baseline for May 2020. And then we'll look at that and determine what the, what our interim benchmark would be for May of 2021. The second goal is a growth goal, and basically what it's saying is for the students who are not, who are below the 40th percentile on the early reading composite, how many of them are achieving aggressive growth? And to close an achievement gap, you have to grow more than what we would call normal. And FastBridge calls aggressive growth, anything that's 1.5 times normal growth. And so it takes into consideration where that student's starting at, and it's saying you need to grow one and a half times better than most of the kids like you if you're ever going to close an achievement gap. So that's a growth lens, so that's the first two. The third one is grade two, and it's a repeat of the, of the curriculum goal of different measures. Instead of the early reasoning composite, it's the CBMR, we call it, the curriculum-based measures. And so it's a different assessment piece, but it's the same idea of aggressive growth. The fourth one on the list is grade three, and this one is a status goal, but it's using the MAP Growth Assessment, who give us predictors. So we're going to take the fall score on the MAP test, and it will predict, we hope, what percentage of students will be successful at the PEAKS test in the spring. So what our goal is, is to figure out currently how many fall students from this fall were on track to be proficient. And then next fall, we'll, we'll see if that number is growing of kids who are on track. And the last one is a growth goal for grade three. Now what I'd like to point out is when you were looking at your colored chart, and you're looking at the orange and green and blue, the blue one where it talks about if we are mastering this, and we're really getting this down, it talks about your interim goals are predictive of, or there's a correlation between them and the board goals. And I want to point out that we've carefully chosen the status and growth because these are predictors towards the PEAKS goal. So that's how they, how they were chosen, because they fit that, that model. So that's the, the goal for the current one on third grade reading. So is there any questions about that?
Ms. Hildy? I think this looks really good. My question is, if the state summative test changes over this timeframe, would this, would this one just be revised, and you just say, the test changed? We might change numbers, or new starting point, or what would that look like?
It, that's a great question. It would depend a little bit on the test company because in my past experiences, oftentimes test companies will provide linking studies that say, if you had this, it would be this, and so then you can use that number and write it in the new format. If they don't provide that, we would probably just start a new baseline and revise the goal.
Which is what we, which is what we had to do with this one, because PEAKS was kind of an in-house developed with teachers, right?
Statewide, it was developed statewide for the assessment, right.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the second goal is our math goal, and this one goes beyond grade three and looks at all grades three through nine. And again, it's a PEAKS goal because that's the state summative we have, and again, I would describe it as an aspirational goal. And there's two interim goals we've, we've picked here, and one's a status lens, and one is a growth lens. So status, we're looking for how to keep track, students who are on track to be proficient in math as measured by the fall MAP Growth Scores. And so they usually peg that around the 62nd percentile. So students who get to the 62nd percentile nationally on that assessment for, for, for the MAP Growth Test, generally they predict would be successful on the PEAKS Math Test and be labeled as quote proficient. So that's a status in, goal, but it also, for us, is helping keep track of those who are on track to be proficient. And the second one is a growth goal. And this one, you'll see a new term, catch-up growth. And catch-up growth there is the MAP version of aggressive growth was the term that FastBridge uses, but it's the same thing. It's basically 1.5 times normal growth. So those are the two interim goals for math, and the five interim goals we picked out for, for reading.
Ms. Hildy? I understand the benefits of shooting, you know, 40 to 80 is a big leap and want to shoot high. Do we have schools that are on a trajectory to, you know, potentially do that? My concern is to say, well, we want 80, but not, we get that you probably won't hit it. I don't, I don't want us to say that, right? If we think that you can really potentially get to twice as, you know, many students being proficient, and then that's something I'd be okay with, but is that, is that a confident, I'm not saying easy answer, but is it a potential?
I would say, and I think Mark would agree, I mean, it's a way aspirational goal, especially if you're starting there. But then those interim goals are going to be leveraged a little bit differently, and are, but that is over five years. You know, what do you think, Mark? It's, it's a stretch.
It's a stretch, and I'll tell you why. I mean, we have a school, I'm thinking of right now, that's at 6% proficiency at third grade. So, I mean, in order for a district to average 80% across the board, you'd have to have a lot of them at 90 and 95, and a lot of them at 70 and 75. So it's definitely a stretch, but I, I mean, we, I think it's, you know, you're asking me about, is it realistic? It's possible. Is it real? I mean, that when you're talking about sample sizes as large as Anchorage has, there's a lot of variables that go into it. So I, I don't think we should make this go lower. I think we just need to be real about our, our interim progress and how we're doing, and I think we aspire to that. I mean, I don't think we can say anything different than 80% of our third graders.
Yeah, and just adding that, depending on where the schools were, that's why looking at achievement is going to be one thing, but when we start seeing growth of schools that really make it up, but they didn't, that, we will see success there. And so that's why you really take those two looks, the, the status of achievement as well as the growth, to say, hey, are we making it in the right direction?
Deana Mitchell has a question. Deana, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I know that we set up the goal as third through ninth grade per math. Is that because in first and second grade, we don't really assess that yet? Because I would imagine that just like with reading, that there's some pre-math skills, but if we kind of miss those, then kids aren't really on their trajectory yet.
Well, we do have some assessments for math in the lower grades, and those can be things, and we do look at those, whether they want to be included in here as something, with a lot of the reading legislation and a lot of things that are coming, I do believe while we continue to work on math, and we're looking at some math curriculum pieces, I think as far as really working on the K3 goal, I think it makes sense to make those the ones that are in writing and that everybody's looking at, but we will clearly be tracking those. Whether it's a board goal or not, we will still track those at the K1 and 2 levels.
I don't know where that came from, sorry.
A weather update.
I would also state that in working on these, and if it is, we can't overtax, if you will, to Mark's, you know, talk, of course, we're going to make the progress, but really that, you know, holding to that and concentrating, there's only so much bandwidth each of our schools and teachers can have. So that's why we, we went ahead and used this. Certainly for achievement, they, for the reliability and validity, they do look at students older than eight, and there's many reoccurring things in education. Students that are in special education are developmentally delayed till about eight years old because then tests become more reliable and valid. Early predictors are very different than status. You, you won't have an early reading unless a child is advanced, then they get a reading CBM. After, you know, first grade, you start to look at that, because everything else is those pre-minor skills that go into that. So, and that is just actually in educational data and testing. That you'll find, same thing for gifted, they become more solid and assured after, as children are older.
I, I do have a question about the 80%. I mean, I know that's aspirational, but are we, I'd like to have something that's attainable too. So I'm just wondering, should we lower that? Or I want to have a goal that we can attain, and not just one that's out there, and it looks like we might make it. Yeah, Ms. Hildy?
I, I kind of, I see both parts of it. My concern is that if our goal is 80% by 2025, that's the standard, like as a board, when we meet each time, and we're looking at progress updates, you know, that's going to be the expectation. I, I think some of our schools really can do this, in fact. I mean, I've seen some really impressive growth. So I just want to say, if we're going to do it, then we need to really be, you know, focused on holding that high level, you know, 80%, that we really want people striving for that. So as a board, we have to be comfortable or willing to say that's what we really mean. We want that many kids doing that much better.
And of course, I want that. That's not a question. I mean, I want more. But what is a realistic goal that we can achieve? So I don't want it to be aspirational, I want it to be something that, that we can actually attain and have that possibility. Ms. Bellamy?
I'm having time today.
There you go.
So I think the administration has pretty much built, I mean, they believe that 80 is reasonable. And I, you know, I'm not, I want to, I want to have high expectations, high aspirations across the board. So I don't want to see it any, I would not personally want to see it any less than 80%. I mean, I thought Destination 2020 was the 90% by whatever was high, but I'd rather have had it high, so that all of our work would be focused on that number, even if we didn't succeed, so that we would, you know, we would give it our best. And, and I agree with a member, Hildy. We've got to, we've got to do our part to make sure that we are, we remain focused on, on the, the goal.
Oh, did you have some? And I don't know if our student would want to read, and part of this and the focus, if, do you have this? Can you look on page, I believe it's page two at the very bottom in the green? This is going to be the, the key things, the very last item in green. Do you want to read it out loud? This is, I think, key to this whole.
The goals and interim goals will, will challenge the organization and will require change in adult behaviors.
All right, well, I just wanted to bring it out to make sure that we're all on board with this, and that we're going to support, and Mr. Donnelly.
I think this is a really useful process, and it's important to have goals. I also am a little bit concerned that it seems like there's some discussion that this will be the only thing that the board works on, but I guess I'm just misunderstanding that because there's other things that'll occur during, over time, that'll be a priority to the public, that we'll need to address. There's, there's other areas of academics, such as civics and other issues that may call for our attention as appropriate. And so I want to acknowledge that this is a worthy process. At the same time, I also want to acknowledge that it should not be to the exclusive exclusion of other important things for having a healthy school district.
And I hear you, Ms., and anybody else can chime in. I hear you, but as a board, we do have to set specific goals and what our focus is going to be on. We can't always change what our focus is when we're given direction to the district on what's important to us as a board. And I think in some of that stuff, we do have some guardrails that might address some of that, that I don't see here yet that we'll go over, that we had set. But as a board, we really need to come up with three goals, that, it doesn't mean that other things won't come up, but our focus are these three goals.
Okay, this next one is kind of fun, and again, I'm just going to reiterate, when we left, remember, Donnelly had a bigger idea of a goal that wasn't finalized about success in life, and how do we know that what we're doing in K-12 is mattering later on? Then there was also something specific to career technical education. And when we brought this back to staff, the discussion wasn't about, and what the new research is pointing toward, is really kids identifying a pathway and a, and a way to success, whether they are college-bound, whether they are career-bound, whether they're going to a four-year college or a two-year or a training program, but that also they would have successful life. And so that's, what happens in school is also coupled with some experiences and some knowledge that will have them be successful. So through the research, we found, we've taken those discussions, because they were unfinished at the time that we ended the retreat, and this is what Secondary, Kirsten, and working with the CTE and principals and her team, in conjunction with Mark, Dr. Stock, and Dr. Johnson, sorry, however you like to reference, came up with these in this last goal. So this definitely is something newer to you, that we created to encompass what we found in the trending research about what we believe the discussion was about. And Kathy has, is ready to take notes and everything, all right? Here we go.
All right. So thank you, Dr. Bishop. So when we looked at the notes from your retreat and, and the intent, what we believed you were trying to achieve through a financial literacy goal and a CTE pathway goal, we, we also looked at a lot of we, we also looked at a lot of the community feedback that was given, which basically said, we want kids to, to be ready for life essentially. And when you looked at the student feedback in particular, they, there was things like, we want, we want you to teach us how to be adults, which really means like financial literacy and how to just manage life essentially. So we wanted to, to create something that was encompassing of those. The other thing that we found in, in our research and that we, we probably all know somewhat anecdotally that the way we measure kids' success after high school is more complex than just a test score. So especially as they're moving into the secondary level and they're choosing a career path, whether that includes college or not, there's multiple indicators about whether they'll be successful. It's not just one test score. So this essentially is somewhat of a checklist. If, if you have a combination of indicators, all of these are research-based indicators that show success for students after K through 12 education. And so if you have these combination of indicators, you are more likely to be successful as an adult. And so what we, what we define the third goal as is beginning in September 2020, the percentage of high school students, college and/or career and life-ready will increase from the percentage of our baseline that we'll establish this spring to whatever we establish as our indicator we want to increase to by the spring of 2025. And part of the reason you see the blanks there are, we have baseline data on specific indicators, but we, we do not track the data collectively yet. So if you combine these things together and you do correlations and, and that sort of thing, that's a process we would have to build and develop the baseline this spring. So that's why you see blanks in those categories. So focusing just on college-ready, when you look at research, there is a, a threshold with GPA of 2.8 being the research kind of baseline for college readiness. So there are other indicators that I'll go over as well, but just specifically talking about GPA, when you look at the research, kids are more likely to be college-ready if they achieve, achieve a 2.8 GPA or higher. So, and i- if you look at our data now in our district, about fifty-seven percent of our kids are at that kind of baseline already. So they, they have that 2.8 GPA currently. So they also have in the research that if, you know, if you're not a student that is turning homework in and things like that and maybe your GPA has suffered, if you achieve on the SAT or the ACT, those specific scores that are listed there, those are also indicators of college success later in your life. So we combined those as an either or, either GPA or test scores, in combination with one or the follow, one of the following academic indicators that are listed below there. Those are also research-based indicators in the education research for college readiness. And you'll see that when you look at advanced placement or IB coursework, we have about thirty-five percent of our students currently participating in those courses in our district. So that, that's gives you kind of an idea of where we're at currently. We also have students taking AP placement exams and international baccalaureate exams as a result of those courses. So, so, and, and three is the passing score for AP and four or higher is the passing score for IB. We have students currently taking dual-credit college, English and math courses. So if you get an A, B or C in a dual-credit course, you are more likely to be ready for college when you get there. And, you know, through initiatives like AMCS coming onboard in our district and things like that, that is something that we're really striving for. We're also striving for that through many of our CTE courses as well. So Algebra II is also an indicator of college readiness. If you achieve an A, B or C, and currently we have about fifty-two percent of our students who achieve that grade in Algebra II before graduation as a baseline. And then SEAL of Literacy is the exam we give students in high school to show proficiency or fluency in a language. And that's something that we, is not necessarily included in, in the body of research we looked at, but it is an indicator that you're, that you're fluent in double languages and, and, and often as a part of a college admission, you have to be enrolled in a, in a world language. So it's also something in our, our district, I think we believe, I believe we've valued quite a bit with our diversity and our immersion programs. So we chose to include it in there. So the idea between, be around college readiness is that you would have that 2.8 GPA or higher and/or the standardized test exam scores, plus you would pick one of those other college readiness indicators. And if you combined those things together, we would say, yes, you're college-ready.
And so would the colleges.
Right, right. Yeah. So any questions about that before I go to career?
Ms. Hildy.
So the first time I read it was the GPA and then the testing and academic indicators. But it's really GPA and academic indicators or standardized testing and academic?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I'm a little concerned on the, just, just if they sign up for an advanced placement or IB course, not complete it?
So, yeah, so there, there's research that we would, we would say completion of that course. So maybe we need to change some language in that. There's research that advanced placement through College Board or the International Baccalaureate Program has done that show if you, even if you don't pass the exam for AP or IB, that there is an immense amount of benefit to you as a student just for being enrolled in the course because you get the rigor of a college course, some of the
And I think you would have to complete it.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
I just wondered that we can measure it.
Yes, if, if we measured this, we would say completion for sure. So, and that's what that baseline of thirty-five percent is, is we have, we have thirty-five percent of our high school students that are completing the course right now.
So question, I, I guess what I'm wondering is we're measuring this at the time they graduate from high school based on they've met this criteria that they're college-ready? And so that's what we'd be measuring from the time they graduate? Like those are the, those, that's what we use?
When they start their freshman year.
Freshman year.
This is a freshman year because it would take time to build this out. And they would build script to be able to capture some of these things, create like a portfolio for all the kids. And each kid would have kind of an indicator of, do I have these things? Kirsten has an idea of having it online. Parents can look at it, kids can keep their own.
Yeah, I mean, my vision of this, if, if
Sorry.
If approved by the, the board is that we would have individual kind of student report cards around these indicators. So it, it would, it would be on an individual student basis, but then we'd also be able to measure it by school and by district. And so we would look at all nine through 12 students because you could certainly achieve some of these indicators before your senior year and be on track for college readiness. So.
Yes, Ms. Bellamy.
Question. So should we add language that say, that say something like, beginning in grade nine or freshman year, students? I'm just trying to figure it because it says just high school students. I guess that's grade nine through 12, huh?
They would stop.
So I guess we may, maybe we don't need it.
So our, our thought is that we would start tracking next year, next fall with our freshmen.
The incoming freshmen. Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking maybe we might need to clarify, beginning with the freshman class of 2020.
So my question is, let's say, I don't ever want to discourage a student, even if they don't meet this, if they want to go to college. So we're not saying if you don't meet this, you're not college-ready. Okay.
It's kind of like right now, they go through school and they believe in college. So this is just breaking it down more about if I were to have the best experiences to prepare me to be college-ready and be successful in college. We have a lot of kids who go to college and drop out. You know, right here at the university, it's forty percent of freshmen don't finish after their sema, their first semester. So this is gauging and having this understanding about these experiences should prepare me more to be successful later on.
I, I just don't want it communicated through our staff or anyone else. If you don't meet these, that you're probably not going to be successful.
No.
No, and, and to your point, President Merced, one of, one of the things that I envision as a part of this as well is that our program of studies that we currently have all of our course descriptions in is really revamping that whole document. So it's more of a workbook. So these, so these indicators would be much more like a playbook, if you will, saying if, if this is really what you want to do, you want to go to, you know, UAA when you graduate or you want to go to this Ivy League, this is what colleges are going to look for and let's get you ready. And so then that program of studies guide becomes more of a worksheet workbook type document. So parents could work on it with their students, students could just work on it independently. Counselors could use that as a, as an advisement tool. And so you would go through and you would, you would have it aligned by maybe career pathways. It would have courses that align with some of these indicators. And, and we could really do a lot of work around looking at these indicators to make it much more of a, a working process as opposed to here's all your definitions of your courses.
Ms. Bellamy.
I'm wondering, thank you, I'm wondering if we start it with life-ready, like listed first. That applies to all kids. And then we work through life-ready, career-ready and then college-ready.
Great suggestion.
Thank you. Ms. Hildy.
Just because I can like anticipate, like it doesn't, you're not fully life-ready, like there's like I just think there like might be a little bit of like push, like, oh, really? You think all you need for life or something? I, I don't know. I, I don't know if there's a, maybe life-ready is bolder statement than, you know, than, than these parameters might provide for.
What would you say?
I would agree.
I mean, like sometimes they'll call it adulting or basics of, you know, or I don't
We need another, we need another word, a word, or descriptor?
I, I think when we talk, sorry to, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I think when we talk about life-ready, we mean at the point you are in your life-ready. So when you're eighteen and you graduate from high school or seventeen, because some of our graduates are seventeen or twenty, you know, when you graduate from high school, the point of life that you are in, we're saying you're ready for the next step. Not that you've learned everything that you can learn, but you're ready for the next step, which is your career or college.
Step in life-ready. Next step, life basics.
But everything we're seeing out there says career, college and life-ready.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. All right, if there, if there isn't any more questions, I'll move on to career-ready. If you turn over to the next page on page three, our career-ready starts. So again, these indicators are research-based within industry, military, all of those types of indicator or institutions have really kind of done their, their body of research around what makes students ready for their career, career world. So what we are proposing as a career-ready student is that we have a student that completes a career indicate, sorry, a career interest inventory. Sorry, I'm tongue-tied. And they also complete two or more of the listed criteria here. So ninety percent attendance is one indicator. Completing community service is another indicator. And that's something that is currently in, in our high schools now. We, if you complete two or more CTE pathways with a C or better, currently we have sixty-five percent of our students completing a CTE course with a C or better now, just as a, a baseline for that one. Completing or participating in an internship, mentorship or work experience course because some of our students do work outside of, of the school and get work experience credit. But we also have a variety of mentorship opportunities and internship opportunities. Another indicator would be earning an industry credential. We've really made a lot of headway there and are continuing to grow that within our CTE curriculum and offerings. Again, looking at dual-credit career pathway courses. So I mentioned this in college-ready also, but many of our courses that we offer within CTE, you can get high school and career pathway credits. So if you are moving on to be trained in the trades, for example, you can get credit for that work that you've done in your CTE course. One of the indicators in the research is also participating in either co-curricular or some people say extracurricular activities. So obviously athletics, but it also would incorporate, incorporate all of our music programs, our debate program, our JROTC programs and, and also CTSO is our, so for example, it's within most of our CTE programs where they compete internationally or nationally. Culinary art programs have competed in competitions and then they've moved on to nationally. They, that, that's what that CTSO stands for. And then looking at the work keys assessment, this is not something we currently do, but our King Tech High School is, is looking at this as a pathway for the future for them. So essentially students would complete that career interest inventory with their counselor and, and teachers at, at some level. And then when they come into high school and then they would work to achieve at least two of those indicators listed there below for, for career-ready. So if they met those two criteria, then we would consider them career-ready based on the research and, and indicators. Any questions about that?
Ms. Hildy.
Just on some of the indicators, you know, we talked about the retreat on measuring what students know or able to do. And we said, you know, just signing up for a course doesn't count or does attendance, is that, is that, is that really fitting into measuring what kids can do? And I know the research part of it, I just don't understand how it fits to the goal-setting part of
Yeah, so, so, so remember, Hildy, one of the research indicators is that, and, and really just feedback from employers, is that if you don't, if you are not responsible and, and just show up for work, that's almost half the battle sometimes. And so it's really a self-management skill to say that I'm going to show up for this job. I'm going to be on time, I'm going to be present and do the work while I'm there. And, and that's really, a lot of industry and, and employers tell us that that's one of the largest battles that they face.
It's part of the be able to do, the behavior of being able to do something.
Yep.
Show up on time. Yeah.
So that's really strong feedback from our, our industry. Cell phone use. So, well, if there's no questions, I'll move on to life-ready. So life-ready, there's a definition there. Life-ready means students leave high school with the grit, perseverance to tackle and achieve their goals by demonstrating personal actualization skills or self-awareness, self-management, social awareness and social management. So we created that definition out of our social emotional learning standards that we've adopted here in the Ankers School District. And I think we're all pretty proud that we are a leader in that area as a school district. So we really wanted to incorporate that work into this life-ready category. So the one thing I will say about life-ready is that this particular body or goal is not necessarily, it doesn't have the research behind it like some of the other indicators do in college and career-ready. And so while there is research around social emotional learning, this is a category and, and a goal that we would really have to develop and, and work on as a board and as a district. And so what we tried to do is take some of the conversations that, and community feedback, plus your own intent for financial literacy and incorporate it here. So one of the indicators is that students would complete a financial literacy course beginning with the freshman class of 2020. So this next fall, this freshman, this freshman class would complete that financial literacy course before they graduate. This will give us time to develop that course and train teachers so that we can work with them through that process and that change. And then in addition to that, we would develop the social emotional learning skills indicators. So we know what the skills are because we have the standards, but we don't necessarily have any tracking system for what an individual student is capable of according to the social emotional learning standards. So we would have to develop those indicators. I, I think it can be done. It's just work that we have to kind of hone in on.
And I'll just add that, that the research is actually there, just not an accountability system. And when they talk about the social emotional skills, when I went to the, the castle, they talk about it as, there's the Aspen Report, which is research-based, that how do kids learn? And how does learning happen? It is through the academics and the social emotional, so we know that. But they talk about the social emotional, just if you could picture in your head when Kirsten says about life skills, that it is, so they explained it that if you're kind of in the business side or more conservative, you see these as, you would call them employability skills. If you're more on a kind of a less conservative side, kind of a liberal arts side, you see this as you call them social emotional. But they are actually both the same kind of outcomes that we want for kids. It's just the lens you see the value of them. That you could put them side by side and the syntax changes, but the outcome for kids and what they can do is exactly the same. So we'll share some of those and make sure that we're speaking to both our community, like the whole scale of people in our community about the value of these through whichever lens you see them.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the other part of life ready that we are discovering as technology evolves is that students really need to be ready to complete an online course, even if they're not going to college. If they are joining the military, if they are going straight to career, most of our training has defaulted to an online system in a lot of different arenas. And so being able to navigate that type of learning is essential for kids after high school. And then the other thing that we are currently doing that really meets a lot of this life ready is the Lions Quest curriculum and as Dr. Bishop indicated, teaching those social emotional skills directly. And then also incorporating our eighth grade health curriculum as well and ensuring that kids get that basic health information as a part of life ready. So the life-ready piece is a little, I guess, not, it's not as specific as the college and career-ready indicators. But equally as important, it's just, it's much more of a development in process kind of goal for us as a district. So.
Are there any questions? Ms. Hildy?
I have a question.
Oh, sure. Can we, go ahead, Dina.
So in, for me, life ready also includes relation, and maybe this is incorporated in the SEL stuff, but it's relationship skills, understanding what it might mean to become a parent. And I know that, you know, so this should ideally be the job of parents, but, and that's something I was wondering about too, in our first two goals. It's a hugely heavy lift for us to get from 40% to 80% proficiency. And so I wonder, you know, I know it's not our job to figure out what the inputs are and the outputs, which is kind of saying what the outcomes to be, but it seems like we're not going to achieve those first two goals without somehow engaging our families and providing some guidance to them as to how they can help be partners in this. But for this one specifically, I'm just wondering, when I look at, you know, when I look at life skills, to me, that relationship parenting piece of it is kind of a critical piece.
May I comment to that? That's a great point, and my suggestion with these things would be to create then those guardrails. So we have five, we have a copy of them when we get to that, but that that would go into your guardrails, that families must be included or something. But that they follow, they continue to follow in this thing. And the guardrails are how you can say what, we don't want you to not include them, is how that could happen.
Okay.
Would most students in the district probably follow that Lions Quest eighth grade health course? I mean, most kids get that, right? But maybe some of your homeschool kids would do the online course or, it just seems to me like, like, I thought all the kids kind of did that, but.
Yeah, so to answer that question, yes, most students do, but we do have a number of kids that move in in high school timeframes. There is some possibility of some of our homeschool students not being able to access that curriculum. But it is our requirement at our comprehensive middle schools that kids participate in Lions Quest and eighth grade health. Although we do have waivers for parents that don't want their kids to engage in those curriculums. So that's why it's listed as kind of a choice, because, you know, parents get to make decisions about what they want their kids exposed to, so.
Ms. Bellamy.
So the number of credits kids need to graduate won't change, but the content of what they need will.
Yes, potentially. And honestly, a lot of these things are initiatives that we've really aimed to increase already. This is a more comprehensive packaging of what we want the graduate to look like. And more dynamic than like an ACT score, as an example, or one particular test score that we're trying to increase. It's really more about, do they have the social skills and life-ready skills to operate as an adult? Do they have what they need as the prerequisites for their next career move? Whether it's straight to work or to get more training at the college level. So it's really prepping kids for that next transition.
So I have a couple of questions. One of the things I don't see in here, and I think is important, I don't know how we address this, is problem solving. Because I know we heard a lot about that as, you know, kids being able to problem solve. How do you see that maybe we could address something like that?
That's a perfect, that is an SEL skill.
Okay.
It's in the cognitive piece of working with others, problem solving, figuring, yeah. That's actually in the cognitive piece of SEL.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay. And then the other one is if you look at the interim goals down at the bottom, the last one, it says the percentage of grade nine through 12 students successfully completing an online course higher. I don't know what that means.
That's just a typo.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
And so I guess my next question is, so we're going to ask our college students to, our college students, our high school students to take one more requirement, and we're, well, actually two, because we want them to take an online course, right? How many students take online courses now?
Madam President, it might not be an additional requirement. It would be a substitute, that if I have to, something in my four years should be online. Many of our students actually take health online, they already take some electives online. So it's not necessarily one more, it's a choice of, that we want to kind of focus their choices to what you said as well.
Okay, and again, I have to remember this says one or more of the following, okay.
Yeah, and to that point, additionally, students are required to take economics as a graduation requirement. So what I would propose is we look at the economics course in particular, and we incorporate that personal literacy into that course that students are already taking so that they get that more expansive curriculum of economics, but they also get the personal, yeah, the personal finance part of it.
Ms. Hildy.
I'll just say, life ready is starting to grow on me.
If it helps you to think about life ready, not only are you looking at SEL skills, but you're looking at academic mindsets, you're looking at academic perseverance, you're looking at different academic behaviors that students engage in. You're also looking at social skills, and you're also looking at learning strategies that kids and students can employ.
In the long range.
Yep, so.
So one more question. So when we look, we're already doing social emotional learning skills, right?
We are.
Okay, so, and our kids are still saying they're not ready. So my question would be, how are we going to do this differently? Or what's going to change that's going to, and I'm going to ask our student there too, because, you know, this is something we heard from students, that they don't feel like they're receiving what they need now to be career-ready. And so I'm just wondering, how are we going to do this differently? I mean, we're going to track it, I get that. We're going to track the indicators, but if our students don't feel it's meeting their needs.
We've just had, just now, implementation with the Lions Quest is the second year. So that, you know, it's just some of these things we've just started but haven't expanded on.
Okay.
And frankly, the social emotional skills moving up into the high school to ensure those, that is kind of a newer, to be very explicit and to define those. And I think part of it is defining them as those employability skills and using those types of definitions for teachers to see. You know, kids ranking, I get my work turned on time, 25% of the time, 50% of the time. You know, like, start to look at some of those things, as Kirsten said, showing up on time. It's not just, hey, it's great you show up on time. It's actually, are you, how consistently are you doing this? And we're going to start talking about it and actually assessing it for a personal reflection. And if, so they put a connection for what we're saying to it. I would say that that connection to job-ready and life-ready isn't there?
Okay, great.
To, but a lot of these, we, like she said, we actually started around this path because it's good research. This is codifying and solidifying and saying, hey, we do think these are important, but students, how would students look at this, I guess is what.
How do you think it'll be taken by kids or?
Maybe I missed this, but I'm wondering for social emotional skills, is that, where is that applied? Like, how is that taught in secondary?
So, well, first of all, it's not taught to every kid right now in secondary, like explicitly. Like, you don't do a specific class on it. But it's interwoven usually, so it's about like teamwork, is it, can you self-manage yourself? Like, can you make a to-do list and complete it? That's an example of self-management. So those are things that are kind of interwoven in high school classes right now, but they're not necessarily specifically pulled out and taught. So this would explain it.
So what could be created from this? Our teachers could come up with a scale or a rubric of experiences that they want kids to have that would be infused in any class. So have kids had an opportunity to work in a team together and actually get a collective score and an individual score. Were they given feedback on their work only and work as a group, as a group? So the skills are those cognitive skills of grit, perseverance, goal-setting. Have kids specifically been asked to set a goal for something, work towards it, achieve it, and then evaluate it. Those types of things aren't necessarily a course you're going to get, but work that could be infused in each of these, which they're going to be spelled out that way. So, yeah, it would be nice to take an SEL class and be ready, but. But I would say, I don't know that I'm, the more you know, the more you feel like you aren't life-ready, because the more, the bigger life gets, so, we're working on it though. But that's a great question, to really be, to be able to identify, how would I know if I'm ready?
Mr. Bellamy.
And also say, that's one of the things woven in the middle school. The idea of interdisciplinary projects, and if teachers are doing it right, they're making groups that have a certain kind of conflict with each other or a certain kind of deficiencies to create issues that those students will resolve in working with each other. And that's why you don't get to be in groups with your best friends and stuff like that very often. It's part of a bigger plan, even if they don't necessarily say that's what they're doing when they do it at the time.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Madam President, I know that we're probably at a time, but we have a copy of the guardrails. We did not do the same thing for the guardrails because we wanted to know that these are really the guardrails that the district wanted. There was something else that came up today, so something else would come off if that was a vote towards that. But then we would have interim guardrails as well to guide that. But we, honestly, the bandwidth to do this between the budget and everything was tapped, so then we tackled it session by session. This is what we saw as the most complete from there, so if it wanted to change, then we'll work on it.
And I do want to probably express that, you know, until we hear back from, I mean, this may change a little bit in June, depending on what we hear, but, I mean, hopefully not. But we do have June to solidify these, correct?
The, I think that it was to take it back to the community in March.
Right.
And then open it up for feedback. Basically, the board does that by getting it on its board meetings as a discussion item, publicizing it. I think that's, you know, advertising, hey, we have these, give us your feedback. And then, so that would be March, April, and then May, because the, to actually start to organize around this would be the work in the summer.
Okay, I just want to know when, you know, because until we get that feedback and everything, I think the board wants to be able to, you know, have one last look at these.
And Madam President, that's a good point. We just wanted to know from these, are these really surely what the board wants us to create interim guardrails for? Or is there another idea that would come up? So we could wait, you know, since we have these now, we're going to make the changes and put, we could put these back up on the board or for the meeting. We just need the guidance, because the guidance from AJ is to get them back out to the community. How does the board do that through its meetings?
Right. So what, any board comments on the guardrails?
That's what we said.
Yep. Okay. Dana, did you have any questions or comments?
I'll take a picture, let me take a picture of it.
Hey there, so I actually just emailed Kathy, asking her to email it to me.
Yep. Okay.
I'm forwarding it right now. Thank you. There we go, should be on the way. Thank you.
And our student rep can play in on these also, you know. Okay.
Ms. Hildy.
I was just talking to a member of the KLS, but, you know, I know we talked about number five kind of at the end. I just need a little help understanding it as a guardrail instead of a budgeting, I guess. What does that look like as a guardrail?
Well, because we didn't, that's a good question.
You know, this kind of opens it up, not necessarily that it has to be in our own budget. I'll just share conversations that I'm having and looking at ways that wouldn't be, because we discussed this as a counselor, a master's level counselor. Our counselors do quite a bit in our schools, but not, if we needed a mental health or behavioral health person to assist, that seems to be the need, the delta that's missed in schools. It doesn't necessarily have to be an employee of ASD. I'm working with Volunteers of America Now, met with their executive director and some of their board members, their board chair, to expand a program through Providence Grant, and then also individual billing, that they could have a behavioral specialist. We're starting with four schools possibly as, for next year. Volunteer schools that they would have, these are BS, like bachelor's science. They're not master's level, not BS, but bachelor's science. So they're, the degree is a little different, and they would be the employee of Volunteers of America. They would employ them. And then we would partner with them on this grant about the work that happens in buildings for support. So it would be essentially those supports, and they would be connected to families through Volunteers of America. We're also working, Kirsten, at the secondary level, getting interns, social work interns, to do their internships, year-long internships in our schools at the middle level. So they have 11 to 17 possible people. So we're working on avenues that are not budget-dependent to be able to do this guardrail. We want to continue to increase, you know, our counselors in our schools, but if we can't, if we're limited, then we're just trying to figure out how as a community and connections through that, can we get the support needed in schools?
Would that, would five include like alternative schools, charter schools that house elementary students?
That's a great question. That is all schools, except for, the board doesn't really determine for charter schools. It would have to be in their charter, they would approve the charter. So alternative schools, neighborhood schools, special schools, things like that, absolutely. Charter schools, really, it depends on the charter. It's a different board that governs that, is my assumption from the board. Great question.
Dana, did you have any questions?
No, I, you know, one thing I just wondered, I know that when we, we had a hard time putting all of. all of these in the negative, I'm wondering if there might also be, it's, it's an addition to the process, but if there would be room for like values that we want to make sure to be upholding as we're moving forward in this process? Like, like making sure that our workforce feels valued, or, you know, making sure that we have outreach to families, or, I, I just have really struggled with putting those types of things in the negative.
So my understanding in this process is a guardrail, I mean, we had this discussion when we met with AJ, and that a guardrail unfortunately is put in this type of format.
And it is a value.
Yeah, and it is a value.
Well, the communities.
So, Ms. Michaelis.
So I'm going, and I'm reading through the guardrails, and I do remember them from our meeting. As I'm reading through our handy-dandy packet here on page nine, it talks about, and it's the definition section, guardrail, guardrail monitoring, guardrail setting, interim guardrails. And so are we going to take what we have here and expand it to having interim guardrails so that we have the path to where these knots don't feel as strong as I think probably what Member Mitchell is responding to?
That's great. We haven't done our share. I, I just briefly shared at the beginning, we, the bandwidth from the budget to the virus to this has been like, oop. So the same people, so we just decided, let's get really detailed and good at the goals, which Kirsten, you know, you know, took a deep dive, Kathy marked with teams and brought that back, and then knowing that, Dana Mitchell mentioned two more guardrails that were possible, if those two wanted to be adopted, then something else would come off to have three to five. So we, we wanted the board to say, yep, give us some, not that they can't change later, but to do those interim, yeah. So, correct, we haven't done our, our, our job on the interim ones yet.
So Dana, did you have two other guardrails that you were proposing?
Um, you know what, I, I would have to think about this. I am, I'm just concerned, you know, this is something that I've talked about since before I was on the board, just concerned about engaging, just teachers feeling like they're not part of the process. And I think that that's really critical at this point, that we have that as a value, because it's going to be harder and harder to get teachers, so if they aren't, you know, if they're feeling dissatisfaction and decide to, you know, pursue a different profession or go someplace else, then it makes it difficult for us. So I just, I, I, I am concerned about that, that piece. And I also, you know, again, mantra that I have been talking about forever is the family engagement. So those are two values that I really do feel strongly about, and I probably should have spoken up more in that retreat, but, you know, sometimes these things have to cogitate, and you need to see it in writing again and think, oh, you know, there's, there's something that feels like it's missing for me. So is that, does that answer your question? Do you, I mean, are you asking which of these would I pull off to replace with those, or?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Holloman.
And this, this is kind of a follow-up to that. There is part of this process that has left me uneasy. We're, we're identifying specific areas we want to see change in, but at times, it's almost like, well, you have to sort of take your eye off everything else that's going on in the district, and we're just going to focus on these things, and if we spend time talking about other things that aren't this, we're, we're not doing our job as a board. And this goes more to the, the retreat we had, not, not what we're hearing from staff and whatnot. And, and that's troubling to me in that I, just like we hold the superintendent and staff accountable for every school and for all students, I, I think the board's accountable to everything that happens in the district ultimately. So I, I'm troubled by it, and, and I, I think this sort of matches up with what Member Mitchell is saying, that there are other things we value a lot, they're not necessarily the specific things we want to see change over the next three, four, five years, they don't relate to test scores directly. We do want everybody in the district to be treated with a certain level of respect, and we want families to feel comfortable with a certain level of engagement and whatnot, but we're not putting those in our goals, because we are trying to keep the list of goals fairly short and simple, and it, it shouldn't be a book that somebody has to sit down and read before they make a decision every time. So I, I just want to make sure as we go forward that we, we don't rule out the board's ability to focus on other things, and that may, that may be staff morale, that may be student morale, that may be family engagement, and a lot of things that aren't specifically mentioned in a guardrail or a goal, but we're still all responsible to make sure that works well.
Ms. Hildy.
And I, I understand, Member Holloman's, you know, one of the guys, one of the guys. I, I, I mean, those are real concerns, and I, I totally get it, but, you know, whatever goals we pick, it's not like graduation rates don't matter suddenly, right? We still are, want to know if kids are graduating, those are all real things, but whatever we choose to focus on is what we expect to see actually improve. And if we don't actually focus on set of goals and then say, we, we really want to see improvement, if we just say, well, we want everything to get better, nothing gets better. I mean, that, I, I think that's kind of understood. It, it doesn't mean the other things aren't important, it doesn't mean that you walk into a school, the Climate Connected Survey will still look at that and say, what's really happening with that? And that's still going to be something principals are looking at, and do teachers recommend their school? Like, those things are always ongoing. This is, what does the board spend the most of our time on? Not all of our time, but are we going to see improvements in these areas? So it's just a focus, but it doesn't make everything else not important.
Well, and I think the other thing that has happened in the past that we have to be careful of is that we have thrown so much at the district and changed where we're going all the time, that it's made it very difficult for them to accomplish the goals. And so that's reason this last time that we narrowed the five down to three to make those important until coming up. I agree, it doesn't mean that we're not going to talk about other things, but these are our priorities. Any other comments, or, I know we're running a little bit over, but we don't have anything in our executive session, and I do want to allow time for any new business anybody wants to bring up. Wow. Okay. I do have a question, but I'll wait until on the HB 181.
Yes. We did change the communications and governance meeting to the thirty-first.
Okay.
Same time, different date.
Yes, sir. Mr. Donlin.
Here's one concern I wanted to raise. For our MAP, Measures of Academic Progress, testing to be successful, the current policy of the balancing of the students in elementary school classes, I think is really important, that we don't segregate our students in elementary schools based on, you know, who might be the more advanced elementary students, all going into one class, and middle in another class, and lower in another class. And I have heard from parents that there are schools where that practice is, is occurring, even though my understanding is that's contrary to district policy or guidance. If we get those kind of reports, what should we do?
Through the president, just sharing with us so that we can investigate it to see, see what's there, yeah. We do have, like, homerooms are generally heterogeneous, but we do have times where they walk to reading or walk to math, and they would get their specific level when they go to those, it just wouldn't be, that's middle school, that's key. You know, you're going to have a higher level math or a, you know, whatever. It's just, so I'm, I'm assuming it's homeroom, win time is by what kids can and be able to do, so we hit their target level, but if the concern is like specific, we can just look at it to, to see what the data say, and, and you could tell right away by like a beginning score at the beginning of the year, to see if that was true or not, yeah.
Yeah, the concerns that have been raised to me were focused on elementary.
Yeah, sure. We, if you share that, we can, and if it's narrowed down to a school, we wouldn't have to look at every single school, so, and we, we can just pull the data just to, to see what that looks like. That's a good question.
All right, if there's not anything else, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we do not have an executive session. So work session is adjourned, and we have time to adjourn.
I, I just have a question. So, so our, our work from here, if I understand, is to take the suggestions that were given, we're going to get another, it'll still be a draft, but get it one step further, it'll be ready for your meeting, and then Member Michaelis will work on those others if they're not going to change, and then when we bring them back, maybe another idea for one. But I think that some of the, these were the ones that had the most votes, so we'll take them, but we can adjust afterwards. So to your question, it isn't set in stone until it's set in stone, but we'll, we'll bring the next version back to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're adjourned.